Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business. Okay guys, let's call this meeting yord here so we get these folks back on the road and we get us out of here in an hour's time. Hi, we already had already talked to them and arranged these folks to come present to us. But I saw them at conference then, I just kind of explained even more of what we're looking for and we've had a couple of meetings already with different people. The state strongly suggests that we have some ordinance in place to deal with renewable energies. I have not, I have perceived that there's not much support in the county for wind at all. Nobody really that I've spoken to, other than one family who wanted one, interested in having those windmills. But there is considerable support for the solar and it's probably coming at some point. So, before we get to that point, we need to know what we need to have in place and that's what these guys are here for. So, you've got a card by chance with you too that we can have a card to?
Yeah, yeah, did you bring something yours?
By anybody?
Yep, okay, I'll pass mine out as well.
Okay, good. So, go ahead you guys, just introduce yourselves and tell them who we are and what you do and then we'll just turn it over to you.
Yeah, great. I'm Jacob. I've been around, in and around economic development in Indiana for about 15 years. Connie and I have been working together really over the last little over a year, supporting communities as they try to kind of figure out how they want to address renewable energy.
Connie Nider, I am a senior policy advisor basically for the Center for Infrastructure and Economic Development, which is a national organization and I know Jacob's going to tell a little bit more about that. I come from an economic development background. I recently retired, well, it's been four years, time flies when you're having, but retired from the Indiana State Department of Agriculture as their economic development director. Prior to that, I was the local economic development director in White and Cass counties, mainly in White County, which is where I live today. So, I've had about 17 years in economic development and I've been working with solar projects, actually it's been longer than 17 years. Been working with solar projects since 2000, renewables I should say, since 2006, when they first started talking. This actual solar developments that have occurred here in the last three to five years here in Indiana. So, today we're here to talk about solar, so I'm going to turn it over to Jacob to go from there.
Yeah, so Connie's got all the answers and I'm just here to provide moral support. So, Connie's got a wealth of experience, like she said, she was involved in some of the earliest projects in Indiana, so I'm happy to be working with her. So, I do apologize a couple months later, I was on the wrong side of the square looking for this building.
I understand.
So, again, I think we met a number of you the first time we were here earlier this year. I'm not going to read this to you, but our organization really exists to help, come on in. Our organization exists, you know, really to help communities kind of just figure out what's the right fit for them as it relates to renewables. We have no desire to tell you what you should and shouldn't do, our goal is to help you understand what your options are. So, a lot of times communities, as we've experienced, you know, they really kind of get caught a little bit flat-footed as these things transpire, whether it's wind or solar. Just because I haven't dealt with a project like this before. So, again, our goal is to really help you understand what your options are, you know, as you decide how you want to approach this from a policy perspective and your policy really is going to be your ordinance, right? So, that's why we exist. So, we've done a number of these types of engagements around the state. We do have colleagues in other states as well. I think our organization's in six states now. We're in Nebraska, Iowa, Kansas, Kentucky, Virginia.
And Illinois.
Illinois? I think, yeah. So, anyway, five or six states, so we're happy to be here. Go ahead Connie. So, again, there's all kinds of energy stuff out there, as I'm sure you can hear, read about. We really focus just on wind, solar, and then battery storage is something that there's more and more discussion about. Battery storage projects can be standalone, they're often coupled with a wind or solar project, so that's a space that we're getting more and more involved in just because there's more and more activity in that space. But wind and solar is really where we focus. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview of kind of where the industry is, what's going on globally and here in the US around energy as a whole. I'm going to speak for a few minutes and then I'm going to turn it over to Connie. Connie's really going to talk more specifically about specific items in your ordinance, how you need to be thinking about drafting those, what questions you all need to be asking yourselves.
When I met them at the conference, just to interject here.
Yeah, go ahead.
He said the same thing, that they're not here to tell us what we should or shouldn't do. I said, well, he needs somebody to tell us what we should or shouldn't do. He said, well, they could advise us as we go along.
Yeah, yeah, Connie will get into this, you know, so we've done a number of ordinance reviews. So, as communities will draft reviews, you know, we'll provide written feedback to you and say, you know, hey, this is kind of abnormal based on what we normally see or, you know, either this may be something that's going to really turn off development and if that's what you want to do, then so be it. Or, you know, we also encourage you to protect yourselves in certain ways, right? And say, hey, this is, developers are going to like this, but you want to make sure that you're protected here, here, and here. So, we call it a range of reasonable, you know, trying to find that middle ground that helps the community achieve what it wants, but also kind of enables development if that's what you want as well. So, why are we seeing so much activity? You know, a lot of this you probably are already aware of, so, you know, the cost competitiveness of renewables has really, really changed over the last, you know, 10 to 15 years. Obviously, when these technologies started, that competitiveness was problematic. That's changed a lot. So, the fuel costs have gone up for traditional fuels and the cost to construct and operate renewable projects has come down quite a bit. Federal and state policy is a big deal, right? So, obviously, there's a lot of federal support behind renewable development, specifically wind and solar. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Forty, let's see, 43 of the 45 largest utilities are committed to reducing, you know, carbon emissions. So, the utilities are out there pushing and demanding basically that they want to be able to purchase this type of power. Half of the states, including Indiana, have clean energy goals. So, all these things are driving, you know, the development of wind and solar along with other types of energies. 400 companies have committed to being 100% renewable, right? So, there's a push from the private sector, from companies wanting to buy this type of energy. Sometimes that's an internal choice by the company. Sometimes those companies are responding to, you know, consumer demand. You know, if you're a consumer product, a lot of consumers want to see products that are made with more and more, you know, carbon-free type of energy. So, those are things that are really just pushing, right? Pushing the type of development, so why are we seeing so much activity, especially really in the last two or three years? We've seen a lot of momentum for wind and solar across the country. We get a lot of questions about the type of support, the federal subsidies. And so, I spent a fair amount of time researching this and happy to, you know, kind of answer questions to the extent that we can on this. So, I was really curious, we get a lot of questions about like, what about all these subsidies and should we be subsidizing? And I'm not here to tell you if we should or shouldn't, but I did want to kind of for myself gain some historical context of what does this energy subsidy situation look like? And so, the furthest back the federal government has had good data on kind of energy-specific support and usually support kind of broadly at the federal level. So, those could be tax credits, those could be direct dollars going to support energy. That tax expenditure, so what we're looking at here is specifically the tax, the tax treatment for energy. So, we're going back almost 75 years back to, I guess longer than that, back to 1967 is when the first data point we had. So, one observation I found that was really interesting, so if you look back at 1967, the federal support was at $11 billion for gas and oil. If you fast forward to where we are today, it's almost exactly the same number. So, wind and solar are receiving $11 billion of support in 2022. So, we're kind of supporting wind and solar at the exact same level that oil and gas was supported back in the 1960s. And then I was curious, okay, so we're at about $11 billion in 2022 of support for wind and solar. But you can see the total support there is closer to 25. And so, I was curious, you know, what does that look like? So, wind and solar is about a little bit less than half of the total federal support. And then in the other half, there's a lot of other stuff, right? So, you've got support for nuclear, you've got support for ethanol in there, you've got support for biomass in there. So, there's a bunch of different things in there. So, I just found this really interesting, you know, historically, you know, the federal government's been very active, as you can see, it ebbs and flows. Very active in supporting energy of different types over the years. Again, you know, I think obviously we're seeing a transition from support for oil and gas to support for renewables. But I just wanted to provide the historical context because I do think it's interesting kind of where this is at and how it's all played out. Yeah, next slide. This is where we're at in Indiana today, so the graph represents 100%, right? So, that's 100% of the energy supplied to Indiana consumers. As you can see, over time, the red line there at the top, that's the wind. So, you know, a decade ago, it was a little bit smaller and it's continued to grow over time. The solar you're just now being able to see, you're seeing the gray, there's the coal. So, that, sorry, the gray is the natural gas and the blue is the coal. Those things are going down, but they're not, that's not 100% of them just going down in total usage, but it's also their share, right? So, part of their decline is them less production, but part of it is that the rest of the mix is being made up by different types of energy. Okay? This data comes from the IURC, so this talks about what wind and solar projects are operating in the state and what's in the pipelines. You can see, you know, wind has been around a long time, Connie was mentioning White and Benton counties, who were one of the first to go with renewables in the state of Indiana. And those have been around for quite a while now, so you see 3.5 megawatts operating. There's been a lot less momentum with wind, a lot more momentum with solar recently. So, that's why you see in the pipeline under construction and construction not started, relatively small numbers there. And then if you look at solar, it's kind of completely the opposite, right? So, solar's still a relatively new technology, at least in Indiana. So, not a lot operating today, but a ton coming behind it, under construction and not yet started construction. So, tons of activity in solar. We are seeing more, more interest in wind, really even just recently. But solar still seems to be the most popular right now in the market. And again, this is also from the IURC, this is kind of showing the total production, right? So, you see, wind is obviously a more mature technology in Indiana, expected to continue to grow. Those lighter blue lines are the projected amount of supply coming out of operations here in Indiana. And then solar, as you can see, is projected to jump quite a bit here in the next few years. And then I wanted to quickly touch on location, why these things are built, where they're built, and timelines around them. So, one is about the RTOs. So, these are the grid operators, so if you're not familiar, so MISO is actually headquartered in Carmel. They serve everything down from Canada all the way down to the Gulf, so all that red, they're the transmission regulator and operator for that. And then PJM is the Pennsylvania something?
Pennsylvania, Jersey, New Jersey.
There you go. So, they actually come into the northwest or northeast part of Indiana. So, one reason we see so much activity is we have two different grid operators in Indiana. And obviously, the whole point of putting up a solar farm or a wind farm is to tie into the grid, right? So, that's why these things get, you know, they're such a focus here in Indiana and such a focus on certain parts of Indiana. It's all about, you know, connectivity to those transmission lines. I think the last thing I'm going to talk about is this is just an example of what a timeline looks like. So, these projects are very, very long timeline, you're talking at least five to six years in most cases. You know, obviously, early on, there's lots of discussions with landowners, there's lots of discussions with those grid operators like MISO, trying to figure out, A, do we have landowners that want to participate? And B, how would this, what would this look like? What is the feasibility, what are the costs to connect a new energy supply to the grid? So, there's years and years of study, there's years and years of negotiations. And then, you know, obviously, once you get into construction, you're looking at, you know, probably typically around a year of construction as well. It's really important just to understand those timelines because I think some people get frustrated about why there's, why didn't we hear about this sooner? Or, you know, why weren't we involved sooner? And part of it is, again, you know, it takes a long time to have those discussions with landowners. If you don't have landowners, you don't have a project, it takes a long time to get through the MISO queue. So, that's just an example of what that looks like. Connie?
Okay. Thanks for just standing here and pushing the button.
Okay.
Well, first of all, thank you. And one thing on the grid system, the regional transmission systems, I call those the traffic cops. And as Jacob mentioned, you know, Indiana is different than a lot of states because we do touch both grid systems. So, power that is produced here in Indiana can go all over the Midwest, even up into Canada. But then because of the PJM, we can actually transport power out to the East Coast. But the thing to remember, it doesn't go just one way. If we have a power outage or need power, we can also bring it in from those locations. And I bring that up because of what happened in Texas here a while back, where they almost, you know, lost their whole grid system. They lost their power. A lot of it was because the natural gas, the liquid in the natural gas pipelines actually froze. And so, then it just started sort of a snowball effect. But they are standalone. They do not connect to any other grid system and that's really what caused their headaches because they couldn't pull power from other locations. So, that is one advantage we have because of those two grid systems that makes it a little bit different. So, first of all, the zoning ordinance is about land use, as all of you know. It is not about economics, but what you put in that zoning ordinance could have an economic impact in your county. And that's why it's a fine line there of how much you put in the ordinance about economic dollars. And I'll get into those specific things with the ordinance. And so, I just wanted to make that clear that it's, the mission of the area plan is land use, as we all know. So, a couple of things to consider as you're talking about your zoning ordinance. And we can make this presentation available, we can email it to you, so you've got a document then. First of all, you have to consider landowner rights. Not only the rights of the landowner who might want to lease their land for solar, but also the neighbor who may not want solar. So, you know, that's a balancing act that you have to deal with. And sometimes it can be a struggle. And that, you know, White County, I'll tell you a couple of horror stories as we go. White County has known renewable energy since 2005, 2006, when we started talking about it. They've been, they have about 26,000 acres under wind and solar today. And that's about 25% of their total landmass, not just ag, total landmass in White County. And the landowners wanted it. And basically, that's why that drove those developments. However, now it's coming to a point where landowners are saying, no, we don't want it anymore, we don't want anymore. And so, they're having those conversations. And one of the things we've noted to them is their zoning ordinance for solar was too lenient. They only had a 25-foot setback from landowners' property for solar projects. That's almost too low. So, they're having those conversations too. So, even counties that have had these projects for quite some time, you know, it can flip. The community perception of it can change.
Sure.
So, that's important to note. And again, I think Jacob mentioned it, there is no project if the landowners don't want to sign. They cannot take eminent domain. These are private companies. And this is a utility that is being a wholesale product, being put onto the grid. It is not a public utility until they start transmitting it to the consumers. And these developers do not do that. So, that's why there is no eminent domain on any of these types of projects, as far as wind, solar, battery storage. And then, there's a lot of discussion about Senate Bill 390. Because the state did bring out some recommendations of the types of setbacks you should put on there for solar projects. That is not a mandate, it is just a recommendation. Some counties think they have to use those setbacks and those guidelines. No. First to tell you that that is just their suggestion. If you want to take advantage of some tax credits that they've listed in there, but there's no money in the budget for any of those dollars. So, at this point in time, it's sort of a moot point with those state recommendations. So, when we look at solar project specifically, there's some conversations that need to happen over land use and farmland and the benefits that it provides. And I'll be the first to tell you that landowners and farmers are not always the same person. There's a lot of, I call them migrant landowners, the ones who, you know, might come in and check it and then they're going to go back to Florida or Arizona or someplace else. The non-resident landowners, that they're just cash renting those farms. And so, those are things to take into consideration. But what is this doing to farmland? It's basically, if you look at farming as a business, because it is. When I talk with communities and I ask the economic development director, how many businesses do you have in your county? Very rarely will they mention a couple of hundred farmers that are out there. Because economic development isn't used to talking with farmers about their jobs, their companies. And so, that's one thing to remember, that they are businesses. And in most cases, they are a very high percentage of your business revenue that comes into the county. And that's one of those dollars that actually end up staying more in the community unless it's a non-resident landowner. But those resident farmers and landowners, those dollars stay here. And so, those farmers need to talk about diversification. I had a professor tell me that if we keep planting corn and soybean, we're going to be in trouble. They have to start diversifying and looking at other sources of revenues. And so, how many are familiar with CREP, Conservation Reserves and Enhancement Program?
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you right there, I'm a farmer.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, here, so let me just throw this back to you. Okay, we're going to take up a bunch of the land that we're raising our food on to, so we can have electricity. So, we're taking our food-producing land and we're going to diversify, as you suggested. Apparently, you know my business better than I, because, because I, you know, I, you know, I need diversification apparently. So, I guess my question is, as a public policy, is that really good when you have a world that's basically starving? I mean, whoever professor you talk to, I don't know who that was, but there's a food, we have food shortages around this world. And there are studies out there that say that we're going to run out of food because of the population increase. So, I don't know that you can sit here and say that, you know, we need diversification, especially in my business. You don't know my business, but honestly. And the other thing is, it's a public policy decision as to whether or not we want to take up good farmland to put solar panels on. Why not put them on a roof, every roof around here, let's put a solar panel on everybody's roof. Does that make, to me, that makes more sense.
It depends on putting them on roof, because most roofs are not built to handle the weight of the solar panels and snow on top of it. Now, if we change the construction, yes, but when you have freestanding roofs that have, you know, not really a lot of structure in them, that could actually be more detrimental to the structure. So, yes, if they build the facility right, that is a great spot. Regarding the farmland for food, I'm sorry, I'm going to lose my voice here. 47% of Indiana's corn goes into the ethanol industry. That is not food, that is transportation. And so, one of the conversations we're having, and we don't have a defined answer yet. So, with that 47% of our corn going into ethanol and with our federal government pushing electric vehicles, how many of those acres will still need to be planted in corn for ethanol?
Okay, I hate to interject here, but this discussion certainly one we're going to have to have, whether we're going to do this or not. But that's not the purpose of the day. The purpose of the day is for you to advise us on what ordinances we need to have in place, should this come into effect, so.
And so, I, but it's a great conversation.
Oh, it is. And it's going to be a tough discussion to have, so.
And I highly doubt it's 47%, I don't know where you came up with that number because so much of our corn goes to livestock feed. But I will not argue that here and Commissioner Meese is right, we can argue this later. But I really don't like the attitude, number one, that you know my farming business, because I'm not sure you do, other than you've talked to some professor, which he probably doesn't either, and so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, fair enough. They need to talk afterwards, please. So, anyway, one of the things that the solar, you know, looks at or to consider is because you are setting aside that land, that there is a potential for it to be back into farmland. And so, it's similar to the conservation reserve program. It's minimal disruption to the soil, such as wind, it totally disrupts the soil. Solar does not because it's pile-driven down into the ground with U-channel, there's no rocks, there's no concrete put in there. Concern drainage tiles, as they pile-drive those things down in. They do try to minimize wildlife and that's a conversation the county and the landowner should have with any project that's coming in before they put it in. And then? Yes, they can resume productive farmland again, the solar panels are taken out. A couple of other things to consider as you're writing this zoning ordinance is agricultural takes. There is what we call dual use of the farmland. Purdue is doing a lot of studies on this, first of all, grazing sheep. We actually have a project up north where they're grazing sheep and also down in southern Indiana around the solar panels. So, that is working very well. And then also, they're looking at specialty crops and vegetables that grow very well under the solar panels because it does allow for shade to occur every now and then, which actually helps and keeps the plants from burning. So, so what you put in your ordinance can have impact whether or not these things are allowed. And that's why I'm bringing that out, is because it's, again, questions to ask yourself. So, things to consider, specific things to consider in your zoning ordinance, the setbacks. When you're talking about setbacks for solar, there are setbacks from participating landowners and there are setbacks from non-participating landowners, and those should be different. Because non-participating may not want them as close or they may not care. And so, they should have the right to waive the setback, whether it's participating or non-participating. If they say, you know what, I don't care if they come right up my property line because I'm not going to be able to plant in that narrow space anyway, so let them use the whole thing. So, those are things to consider. Screening, because there are non-participating landowners, some people don't like to look at these projects. And so, the zoning ordinance can include screenings and buffers, which may, some are putting berms in there. Again, you have to take into consideration your drainage when you start putting berms all around the field. And so, that's something to consider. But vegetation, it could be trees, shrubs. You can decide how you want that screening, that buffer, but also be flexible. Make sure you're talking with your soil conservation because your soil here in Park County is completely different than it is in White County. And so, it depends on the actual location and what is going to grow best and what type of seed mixes should be put in there. And so, that's something to consider even on the trees. And then vegetation, I highly recommend, if you're going to put in a solar project, that you have a vegetation plan, which I'll get into here, but that you look at the types of seeds. Again, don't be so restrictive in your zoning ordinance that it could actually hurt what's being planted underneath those solar panels. But they should also do what we call a pre-planting, where they come in before they do anything else and they pre-plant the cover crop, so to speak, which is basically going to be, could be a rye grass, it could be some red clover if they're going to graze sheep. So, knowing what's going to happen with that field based on the farmer and the landowner, if he wants to graze sheep or put poultry in there, no cows or goats, you know, that may make a difference as to what's planted under the solar panels. But they should do a pre-planting before they start moving any vehicles into that field. That's going to help with, you know, with your topsoil blowing away and all of that. And plus, it helps stabilize that. And plus, it helps stabilize that soil. So, those are things to consider. And what you put in there, again, talking with your soil specialist, your agronomist on the seed mixes that are going to work for this area is very important. Getting that local input from the, from the actual landowners there of what they may want to do with that land. Okay, so, some precise language to consider in your ordinance. You need to define, if you're looking at, commercial or non-commercial. A lot of ordinances will combine one ordinance with both commercial and non-commercial, you know, rooftop or groundabout, just so you define what it is. We recommend you sort of keep them a little bit separate, because it can be confusing if people start looking, "Oh, wait a minute, that's commercial, that's non-commercial." So, keep your non-commercial in one section, A. Commercial, section B, within there. But have those defined as what you want them to mean. There are some definitions, and I do have a model solar ordinance that I'll leave a few copies with, and it's available online, too. So, define those setbacks. Are you setting back from the first solar panel, from the fence, from the property line, from the house? You need to define what that is. Not to say our setback is two-hundred-and-fifty feet from where to where. And so, define that when you're talking about the solar project, is it the fenced area? Because when they're talking solar, they may take two-thousand acres under lease, but those solar panels will only cover about six-hundred of those acres. They're usually about forty percent of the actual lease lien, because they have to allow from your buffers, your setbacks, your fencing. All of that is separate. So, make sure you're defining where you want that to be measured from. And then, again, make sure you allow agri voltages or co-uses of that land within your ordinance. Don't make it so strict that the landowner can't do anything. So, that's where we recommend, once you have a draft, again, our team can look over it and see where we see, "Oh, this is good, this is questionable, you might want to look at this again." And then, yes.
What made you say cheaper poultry, but no goats or cattle?
Goats like to climb, and cattle like to rub. So, if you've got your solar panels, your racking system out there, and a goat climbed up on top of it, that wouldn't be good. And the cattle constantly leaning and rubbing against the panels and the racking system.
So, there's no elevating them, they prefer.
They are looking at that, they are doing some studies. And actually, Purdue, excuse me, has developed a low-growing corn hybrid that if they raise the level of the solar panels up, they can actually get corn growing under the panels now. So, there's a lot of research being happening. But right now, we know poultry and sheep are the safest that, around solar, or the height that they're at today.
Doesn't the company that leases the property have say-so about whether or not there's livestock regardless of what it is?
Not if the landowner doesn't sign the lease. If the landowner says, "I want to graze sheep,"
It's something the landowner needs to deal with prior to signing the lease.
But your ordinance needs to allow him that opportunity also, yes. Yeah, okay, so then, prior.
In this sample ordinance that you have, is that stated in there? They take care of that, when that sample?
There's actually some height suggestions in here. There talks about screening and vegetation, lock coverage.
Landowner agreement between livestock or no livestock, is that in there?
No, because that is a private conversation that the county does not want to get into the middle of. But you don't want to make it so restrictive that they wouldn't have.
But we want to state that it's permissible to have that discussion.
You can?
You can prohibit it, too, if you want to.
But we just want to make sure that we understand it's permitted if you want to.
Yeah, she's encouraging that language, yeah.
And part of it's allowing yourself the flexibility around other things, right? So, if you get so restrictive in your ordinance about fencing and heights and ground cover and all that, where you've got it like this, you know, we're just encouraging you to leave yourself the flexibility that if the landowner and the developer come to an agreement that they want to, you know, have poultry out there, that you allow yourselves the flexibility to regulate that or do it in a way that would allow that kind of.
And ultimately, that to me is where it's got to come, that agreement. So, that's why, that's why we had our discussion. That's the things we need to hear from you, that we need to make sure we include in these.
And I know, Connie, there's some examples in Indiana of the dual use, right?
A lot of the contracts we're seeing are having that language in it. Our law firms had several clients that were looking at that.
But yeah, and that's.
It's a negotiated contract.
If the landowner doesn't sign a lease, there is no project, because they have to have a critical mass of land before. So, if neighbors get together and say, "No, we're not going to sign."
What is the critical mass?
It depends on the amount of megawatt and the permit that they've applied for through MISO. Generally, they're looking at twelve-hundred acres for about a two-hundred acre project. But again, that's twelve-hundred under lease, that's not twelve-hundred acres.
You said two-hundred acres, you meant two-hundred megawatts?
Two-hundred megawatts, sorry, yeah, two-hundred megawatts, twelve-hundred acres.
Yes, out of twelve-hundred acres, four-hundred or so, that would be under solar.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be completely continuous, does it, or does it?
No, but it does have to have, they look at where the trees are located. They look at where the utility lines are, where the substation is. So, there's a mix that they have to look. They don't want to get it stretched out so far, especially if you're not wanting overhead power lines. If you're telling them they have to bury their power lines, they're not going to want them separated by too many fields.
Or roads, yeah, right.
Because most of the ones that have been contacting around here are near large transmission lines, is what they've been doing. I mean, they seem to want to try to concentrate it near those larger transmission lines.
Because the farther away they get, they're going to have to run more lines to get the power back to the grid, yeah. Okay, so, things to consider prior to issuing any improvement location permit is you need to have a road and ditch use maintenance agreement completed. You need to have a vegetation plan received, reviewed, approved. You need to have an economic development agreement, EDA, and there should be a decommissioning agreement. All needs to be negotiated before any permit is issued for them to build anything. You know, now, you can negotiate and talk as you go through this, but make sure that your building doesn't issue that permit.
I know the decommissioning issue came up in Benton County. How was that resolved? How did they work that out? Did the homeowner get stuck with the bill for decommissioning, though?
No.
Okay, good.
Homeowners never get stuck with the bill that we have seen.
Okay, good.
Because the county, as long as the county issues a decommissioning agreement that requires financial assurances to be in place before a project is built.
It was my understanding, they did not do that originally? Is that the case, or is that bad information?
In Benton County, what hap, are you talking about something that just happened here recently in Benton County?
Within the last year, it seemed like, we were told commissioners-wise, that as the companies decommissioned those, that the responsibility for tearing those down was on the landowner, not on the company. Is that not true?
No.
Okay, good, okay.
So, are they requiring a bond? Is that how they're ensuring that? Because my main concern in this is this pop-up companies and bankruptcy, and who's left holding the bag?
Yeah, the bond is issued and in place before, and it's generally in the name of the county. Now, the county doesn't have to go out there and physically remove it, they could hire a company. And generally, what happens is, they, they can determine, the county can determine what type of financial assurance. If it's a bond, if it's an insurance policy, if it's a letter of credit. You do what you feel comfortable.
It could be a corporate guarantee, so like you said, it could be some LLC, but it could be guaranteed by, you know, corporate parent that, you know, put the bill. So, they're typically the four types of assurances we see.
Because what I'm seeing is, when we're negotiating this, is that you've got one group negotiating, and then they're selling it to a third party, that sells it to another third party. And then, you're dealing with some, you know, strange party down the line that you've never talked to, that.
We have seen some.
It should, the bond or financial assurance, it doesn't go away if they sell.
So, is that what the other communities are doing? Then they're doing upfront posting of insurance or bond?
We have a couple of things, what, sorry?
And we're going to get into the decommissioning actually in the next step.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, she is going to talk about that. But there's, you know, typically, a lot of times, it's funded kind of in chunks, you know? So, maybe they fund part of it when they get their permit, and part of it, you know, as they're kind of in construction. But certainly, by the time that operates, it should be fully funded. The other thing I was going to say regarding the transfer, I mean, obviously, you can't stop a private entity from selling an asset to another entity. But we have seen some languages that basically.
Successors and assigns.
It kind of requires the county, requires the county to be notified of a sale, and it requires that that assurance, you know, be properly transferred, you know, some language like that. So, again, we don't encourage governments to kind of overextend their reach, but certainly, ensuring that that, that financial assurance is properly transferred and maintained. And then, you guys are notified of a sale, is certainly, I think, would be reasonable.
Because this technology will go away. I mean, it's going to end someday, and it's going to have to be taken down and discarded.
And technology improvements, what they're putting up there today in twenty years, they need half the amount of panels to produce the same amount of energy.
That's the other thing, they're signing like thirty-year agreements and stuff like that.
But they could still retool prior to that thirty-year lease term. So, waiver options and authority. Who has the authority to approve a waiver? Whether it's the area plan director, or whether it has to go to the commissioners. Generally, it's the area plan director that has that authority. And then, make sure you spell out the process. They have to apply, they have to include, you know, layout, they have to do all these things. And in your agreements, they will need to commit to a date to begin operation or to begin construction. And so, you can hold them to those dates. If they don't meet those dates, guess what? You know, they have to come back and renegotiate everything. Okay, so, the actual agreements. The economic development agreement is an agreement between the county and the developer. In a lot of counties, the commission and the council jointly negotiate these documents, because, you know, one's dealing with money, and one's dealing with the policies. So, they jointly sign these documents with the developer that's building the project. That agreement's going to spell out, you know, how many acres they're taking, how many megawatts they're producing, how many people they're going to employ, what's their timeline. And then, that's where you can spell out if you want an economic development payment to come to the county. That economic development payment is not taxes, it's not a pilot. It's not a payment in lieu of taxes. It's above and beyond, and it's usually the extraordinary dollars that the county can determine how they want to spend those dollars. We call it loss-of-opportunity payment. Because if you have twelve-hundred, two-thousand acres of solar farms, you're not going to have any residential development in there. You're not going to have any additional buildings, manufacturing, things like that that are going to grow up in that area. So, you've lost that opportunity. So, you ask the developer to pay you money upfront that you can then set aside. You would sign a resolution that says, "Okay, this economic development payment for the solar project can be used for other economic development opportunities."
Sounds like a bribe to me. It's a bribe.
Pardon?
It's a bribe.
It's an incentive, it's an incentive.
Really, typically, the way, typically, the way it's negotiated is, it's reflective of the property taxes they would pay. So, typically, what they would do is, you would provide a tax abatement and reduce property taxes in exchange for an economic development payment.
This is the last time. It's basically paying for the abatement, and it's, you don't have the abatements, you don't get that, whatever.
Yeah, that's pretty much right.
But it's, yeah, I.
But the thing to remember, economic development.
I mean, paying your property taxes is a bribe, is it?
Well, if you're not going to get the economic development agreement without giving them an abatement, basically.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just saying, in many cases, they're kind of just shifting their dollars from property tax to the payment. And the reason counties like that, and I'm not suggesting you guys need to do it, the reason counties like that is, when it's a property tax payment, the county gets a little piece, the school gets a little piece, right? And an economic development payment, it's a lump-sum payment that the commissioners and the council essentially control. So.
It doesn't go.
Some communities have done it because, you know, they say, "Okay, we need to fix."
You use it for whatever you want to use it for.
Yeah, it's not, no strings attached dollars that you can go do a project with, rather than having it kind of distributed across the taxing units. That's why some communities have done it. I'm not arguing about other motivations behind the dollars, but mathematically, that's the way a lot of, a lot of them are done. It's, "You give us a reduction over here, we make a payment over here, and you get these dollars more flexible than these dollars."
And it also makes a difference then on the timing and what is happening in your county today. So, and I'll use the example of Jasper County. They know their wheat-filled coal-fired generating plant is going to be shutting down here in about, I think it's about three years now. They were going to lose a third of their assessed valuation. They wanted the solar projects to come in and replace that loss of assessed valuation. So, they did not do a tax abatement or ask for an economic development payment, because they wanted that assessed valuation to get on the books before the wheatfield plant shut down. And so, that was their method to their madness there. Some counties say, "Well, you know, we need some cash to build an industrial park in another part of the county," which is what White County did. They used it to run water and wastewater out to an industrial park. And without those dollars, that would not have happened. So, you know what's happening in your county, and that's why the conversation with council and commissioners is important. The other thing to remember you need to include in that agreement, even if you don't take an economic development payment, you need to include a pilot clause, payment in lieu of taxes, which is different from the economic development payment.
Yeah, we get those now from federal, federal.
And this is what happened in Benton County here a couple of years ago, in the last couple of years. And that's why Representative Nagel actually passed a state law to make sure it doesn't happen anyplace else. But if state law, tax laws change or anything occurs, the federal government actually allows, if a new buyer comes in and buys a renewable energy project, they can reassess that down to almost zero and pay no real estate taxes. A pilot agreement in that economic development payment will waive that. They agree that they will continue to pay real estate taxes at the prior-set rate, no matter what happens on state or federal laws. And so, you're protected there. So, those are, if nothing else, remember pilot, to include that clause in there, even if you decide not to do an economic development.
So, a question, most of the time, we've based our tax abatement decisions the county council has on basically new jobs. So, let's just use your theory you suggested a while ago, with about twelve-hundred acres, and then, they come in, they build the, they build the, put the solar panels in, and the construction's done and all of that, and they've gone away. Now, I realize there's some general maintenance, because I even have a friend that goes along and mows in these solar fields and that sort of thing. But they're a company, they come in, they mow, and then they go away. So, my question to you is, how many actual new jobs, permanent jobs, do the solar fields or projects create?
It depends on the project and on the company and what other projects are in close proximity. But that's why you asked that in the economic development agreement upfront, what are the number of jobs? It could be anywhere from a dozen to a couple dozen. Again, it depends on where they're locating them based on what other projects are in the area. But yeah, those are very good questions. And the thing with any project in an agricultural area, White County, and I'll use it as an example, because we actually provide tax abatement to confined feeding operations and to anaerobic digesters. Why? They don't have that many employees. They might not, in an anaerobic digester going into a farm operation, it may not have any additional employees, but it's adding assessed valuation. Same with confined feeding operations. What are you currently receiving on, per acre, on just straight ag land? What, two, three hundred dollars in real estate taxes annually? It depends on county and township. You know, let's just say three hundred as an average. If you put a confined feeding operation on that acre, or if you put an anaerobic digester, you're now taking that per acre price up to maybe twelve or thirteen hundred dollars per acre. So, you are increasing your assessed valuation without increasing jobs. In rural communities, assessed valuation increases is just as important, if not more important, than jobs.
Well, if I gave them a tax abatement, why then? I really haven't increased that, because I'm not collecting that.
But you didn't lose anything either.
I'm phasing it in over a period of time. No, I didn't write them a check, but I, or phasing it in.
But with a tax abatement, you're starting out at zero without the.
Of course, that argument also makes an assumption that they'll go somewhere else and not build their own. Because that's an important piece of that. And yes, if you can grow the AV, then there is a significant argument for doing an abatement. But with that being said, if, you can grant abatements until you're blue in the face on things that you would already have. So you've gotta have some kind of-
At every-
-boundary to whatever it is that you're doing here, or you just, I mean, you can just go nuts, grant abatements for whatever reason.
And that's why conversations with commissioners and council jointly is important on those conversations.
Would the jobs that are even be local jobs, or would they be?
Oh, yeah.
How would they be?
Just like you mentioned, mowing.
The permanent job.
Uh, mowing is a permanent job that has to happen. They do have to go out and-
The Mexican ones, let's, yeah, I sort of stay with locals here.
You need not think they're a bunch of Mexicans that come into me. There's one, there's one job, and the Mexicans kind of matter.
Roads are going to use to make sure those roads are put back at the same condition. It's not as important on a solar project because it doesn't have the heavy weight that winter and, but again, ditch maintenance. You know, when they're cutting in or pile, pile drying the components, you need to make sure they're not touching any tile, public or private tile. The private tiles are handled in their own lease agreements. The public tiles and ditch, you know, is handled by the county. So those are important to cover all those issues. Vegetation plan, you know, they need to propose to you what they want to plant, vegetation under the panels, trees, buffers, all of that, and how they're going to maintain it, to make sure they're, you know, keeping out noxious weeds and such. And then the decommissioning plan. Generally, the developer must hire a, and pay for it, a third party to come in and determine what's it going to cost to decommission this project completely, remove everything above ground, and generally 48 inches below ground to make sure that everything is removed. Again, taking into consideration, maybe the land owner wants something left there. Have that conversation. But then that's where the amount of the bond comes into play when they first issue that bond. There are generally escalators every three or five years, depending on what you feel comfortable. So it's not a set for the rest of the life. They, it does escalate in, in value that is issued before any building permit is issued. So those are all things that need to be negotiated before, yes.
On the decommission part, how are they addressing like the loss of topsoil or, or things like that then?
Uh, solar projects should, should not move a lot of topsoil. That, that should be in the lease agreements. If there is, if the developer says we're going to move that sandhill over there, well, that, the landowner needs to approve that before in their agreement.
Right.
And so there, and that's why I really promote the pre-planting of vegetation. So again, you're, you're not losing your topsoil.
Because a lot of the ones I've seen, there's five feet from the surface, but that, that's eaten up a lot of the topsoil that you're using for your-
What's five feet from the surface?
You, you mentioned 48 inches that they would, for the decommissioning-
Just to take any components, if they, if they cut in wires.
Right.
Uh, for solar-
Doesn't mean they're removing 48 inches of soil, it just means if there's anything in the ground, it's gonna be removed.
Yeah.
I will have to say, I know my boys have built a few of these solar, actually over on the side, be close to Ohio line. And it wasn't like they just went in and filled the building. They took dozers, excavators, relaid out the whole piece properly. So there's more to it than just going in and setting it. They actually stripped the topsoil, put this side, put the drainage, put everything. So it was, all these fields around here are not flat already set up for. So then they put the topsoil back, then the planting, and then the solar park coming in. I don't think we're gonna see too many places in Park County that they're not moving a lot of dirt.
Yeah, see, because White County, they did not move hardly any dirt. So I think it depends on the developer too. And that's, that's why conversations, communication with the developer before, before anything is approved is very important.
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Also with the decommissioning, I, I assume that there's a life expectancy of these panels.
Yes.
Then there has to be something done with those panels once that life expectancy takes place. So how are they recycled, or are they, or is there any, you know?
Are they hazardous waste?
No, they're, first of all, the things that are-
Or do you really know what, you know, 25, 30 years from now, what they're going to be like?
Uh, first of all, the components that are inside a solar panel, there is no liquid. So if it cracks, there's nothing that rolls it. Basically, the same components and circuitry that's in your solar, or in your cellphone. Um, and so it's, it's, there is some lead, just like in your cellphones, that solders some of the components together. Um, Purdue is actually studying recycling right now. There is a company, in fact, we just looked at it, that is recycling all of the solar panels. There are not a lot of them today, solar, that are being, um, recycled because they do have about a 25, 30-year lifespan. Will they last 25 or 30 years? I'm guessing technology will improve. They are gonna have to come in and replace some of them. So there is a company up in South Bend today that is recycling solar panels.
But they aren't hazardous and they are recyclable, so that's-
They are recyclable.
That's all they need to know.
Again, you would have to, uh, your landfills today are, have your liners in them, that there's nothing, even if they would break apart out in the field, there's nothing that's going to leach out into the soil and into the groundwater. But we are working, in fact, I had this conversation with Representative Nagel. We need to incentivize some companies to come in and develop recycling programs and recycling companies. So she's like, okay, let's work on that. Because when they are ready, we want to be ready for the recycling. Because to, in the past, out west, they did go into the landfill. We're wanting to stop that, yes. And you can include a, a line item in your ordinance when you're talking about decommissioning that, you know, panels will be recycled, um, and I'm not sure, I'll have to look up the wording. We have some wording, I, I saw someplace. But, you know, consideration for recycling will be, you know, uh, used in decommissioning of these projects.
Not, not to hurry, but with you, we, yeah.
Okay, so things to negotiate, your ground cover and vegetation. You know, are all of the assets to be removed? Or can the non-energy assets be maintained based on the landowner? The specifics of the economic development agreement? You don't put the specifics in the zoning ordinance. That's a negotiation after, you know, you start talking-
But you allow, allow for that discussion, though.
Yeah, financial matters are not in the ordinance, but they are negotiated. And then as far as resources on the actual ordinances, there's three resources here that have actual copies. And so the Center for Infrastructure and Economic Development, our organization, we have a whole database of, uh, solar ordinances, not only from Indiana, but from other states that you can pull up and look at. And so you can search based on, you know, you can get just a one-page summary of that ordinance, some of the key points. Or you can actually pull up, and it goes into detail, the height and the lighting and what all should be included in a zoning ordinance.
And then once we create ours from picking from these things, that we can send these to you and you can review those and tell us what we should or shouldn't do and what your suggestions would be?
Correct, yeah. Because these are not necessarily our top recommendations, they are basically what's out there today that this is showing you. And then you can actually download and, and print those summaries and everything. IU, uh, the Environmental Resilience Institute, they developed a model solar ordinance here a couple of years ago. Uh, again, this is not one that you want to white out the name and put your name in and say, here it is. This is to ask questions and talk. This gives you questions to consider, things to talk about in your ordinance. And that's why it's important. I've got a few copies of that here for you. And then, um, they also have on their website, an Indiana Renewable Energy Guide for Local Governments. Again, it's a couple pages on things to consider as you go through this.
And you're gonna send this presentation to me, so I'll have all this info?
We'll have all these links on there. And then there, Purdue did a, a database of all wind and solar ordinances across the state. They have every county listed on there. Again, they have, um, a spec sheet that goes over each items within it. And then you can actually link to the specific ordinance for that county and see it specifically. So great resources there for you. Questions?
No, I, I appreciate your comment. I mean, big question would be, how, how do we go about this? Do we want to go about this? But we need to have something in place regardless of whether we choose to do it or not to do it. We need to have something in place in case we should choose to do that. And my goal is to work with you folks and all of us to get an ordinance together. I will also take that to the commissioners. I know the Barnes and Thornburg will look at it and see if we've got what, what they think we need to have covered as they work for the county commissioner.
I didn't make enough copies for everybody, but there's some that's just there.
So, uh, I appreciate your time and it's a-
And so once you have a draft, you know, even if you know it's not ready, you can send it to us and we can take a look at it and provide commentary back.
One question, um, Platinum County, which is of course just east of it, and, and I think they've already maybe embraced some of the solar and renewables, I'm not sure. But they recently adopted what they called a Uniform Development Ordinance. And it's more about just, it's, it's more than just solar and renewables. It's, you know, other things within that ordinance. But one of the things it did, if I understood it correctly, it basically took decisions about the, uh, the placement and the, of the solar farms and all that, basically away from a, a Board of Zoning Appeals, put it back into the Plan Commission, which then takes it to the county commissioners. Have you seen that, or is that something that they should think about? Because I don't like appointed boards because they aren't beholden to anyone but themselves. And is that something, and I don't know, maybe it's in all of this, but I know from their, I, what I read from the, the Platinum County Commissioners, they wanted it out of that appointed board's decision and then Plan Commission, then to the three of them. Is that something you recommend, or what do you think about that?
Well, we've seen it both ways. Uh, the BCA, as you know, is a quasi-governmental entity. That if you're requiring a special exception or some different things, that it's gonna have, you know, it's gonna have to go through. It depends on how you set up that ordinance. We've seen overlay districts, which is similar to the UDL, where it's a set ordinance that overviews and says, okay, if you're, um, building a solar project in an ag zoning, then you just have to apply for a, your building permit. Some don't even require special exceptions. They just say, go right to the building permit and you're approved.
A special exception always kicks it to the BCA, right? Is that right?
Um-
To the BCA, then the BCA has to bring it to us for us to-
Yeah, commissioners always have final vote.
The only scary part on this, and I've already tried it, the legislation proposed, take all of this out of county hands, that the county would have no say in any of it.
It almost passed, too.
Yes, it did.
But it did almost pass.
But it's gonna come up again. It's gonna continue to come up. So that's why we have to be prepared to deal with that.
Because, uh, will, will the counties that already have things in place, will they be grandfathered? I don't know. Um, there's a lot of legislators out there that are, are so in support of local control, it's gonna be a hard fight.
That would be a tough sale to a company, for a company to come into a contested area where the county doesn't want it and the state does. And they're gonna need cooperation from the county. The county's gonna tell them, go to hell, we're not doing anything for you. So that'd be a tough sale there, I think. So I don't think that will come up. I think it's either gonna be accepted or sought. Hopefully, Home Rule will reside over all that stuff.
Right, that's, that's-
I can understand the state wanting to give counties incentives to go along with plan, but giving incentives is different than dictating to you that you shall do it.
Right.
No, I think the question you asked is, that's the kind of stuff you want to be thoughtful about. Because some, some communities like the fact that it goes basically, they have to negotiate with the ca- council and commissioners, they have to negotiate with the APC and they have to negotiate with the BCA, right? So they feel like it gives them kind of broader. But some prefer to keep it just within the APC, and there's even one county-
White County does not require a special exception as long as it's in an ag zoning.
But there are some counties that we, that I certainly have discussions with that those boards are bigger, have control over more money than our whole county has. So it's a different, different set of priorities.
Be intentional about that process, so you keep the decisions where you want them to be made, right?
Right now, all of those final decisions come to the Board of Commissioners. The, the, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board only bring recommendations to the commissioners. They have to prove.
So is that right, Nick? So the BCA decisions still come to them?
Yes, they still come here.
Yeah, Plan Commission and BCA, they all have to come to them.
That's what we've done traditionally, yeah.
Is that in the ordinance, or is that's what we've done traditionally?
I'd have to look at the ordinance, but that's what, how we're operating.
That's how we're operating, okay.
I'm guessing it's dictated in there, it shall be.
Well, I hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just make a recommendation.
Yes.
Well, I knew for the Plan Commission, but I wasn't sure about the BCA. I didn't, wasn't sure that that actually came to the three of them.
BCA really just simply has the authority to override the Board of, uh, the, the Board. And so the Zoning Appeals can, can regulate that, and then come back and say, no, we just, we, then we're gonna do this, but it still has to come to the Board of Commissioners for final approval. And even if it's not in the ordinance, it's certainly a standard operation procedure that we've had over the years, and it would hold up in court in most cases because we've always done it that way.
And again, I think your ordinance is gonna set forth all those, the framework of everything that has to be required. So ultimately, you know, commissioners and the APC are gonna decide whether or not to issue a permit. But before you get to that, right, they're gonna negotiate the economic development agreement, they're gonna negotiate the road use agreement. So you have a lot of control leading up to the point where you actually are ready to issue it.
And that way, once we get that, an ordinance of some kind put together, uh, and we've sent it to you, and you think we've covered everything, we have, we need to have another meeting like this. So all these what-if questions can come up that we, we didn't think of, didn't address before, so.
This is gonna be different than anything we've ever done before.
It is, it is, yep.
Whatever this ordinance says is gonna go, then.
Yep, I agree.
So do I have your email address?
I can give it to you if you don't.
Let me get it just to make sure so I can email it to you.
Okay, all lowercase, JMEECE, number 2,000, at yahoo.com. Jmeece2000@yahoo.com.
Got it.
I appreciate you coming, guys. I'm brand new to us. We just wanna, I mean, scary proposition. It's a, there's a big headlong push, you know, big bull movement to get it all done. We can make sure if we do it, or if we permit it, that we have all of our, all of our things in the proper place.
And there are some counties that have flat out said, no, we don't want them.
Yes, I understand. And Montgomery County had a difficulty, so they didn't have it in place. And other people started saying things.
I'm not giving them a tax abatement.
And that was it.
I'll tell you that. I'm not giving them a tax abatement.
And that's, again, that's your decision.
Absolutely.
That's why we don't want to come in and say, you need to do this or this.
Yep.
That's not what we're about.
And I appreciate you. We'll be asking because we, we have to dwell on your experience because we don't have any, so that's where we are.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, let me get out of your way.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, uh-
You're not in our way at all. We're gonna come to some pretty exciting stuff here coming up.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate you.
I left a few cars, but I don't want to.
Hmm?
Just want to be on the list of our old farm right now.
Well, not, not as long as I'm alive, I'm not gonna have, I'm not gonna put solar panels in there. So just get that net running.
All right, let's talk about stuff. Really, on purpose, this meeting is not really to discuss any, any policies that might be coming forward, or you guys, because that's all your business. My, my whole intent with this is just to discuss with you the things that may be coming up and get some guidance from you, so some things that I want, some assurances of what we are looking at. And then you can, uh, you can just be aware of what we're looking at going forward. If you have some suggestions along the way. Um, and again, I'm always speaking for me. I got to tell Dan when I first come in, having a chance to talk to Bruce. I'm not speaking for Bruce or Dan either one. These are things that I see, and they may well have some other things. But just to go down this real, real quickly, I won't take much more of your time. It's been about an hour already, so, um, um, CBC looks to continue to, uh, support PCI. The $2,000 a month rate that we do now. Uh, the money that we will pay the, uh, the council right this year is kind of number, you gotta be on between is because, um, when we kick that, uh, new 8% in mid-year, some bookings were already booked and paid for ahead of time. So we don't really know how many dollars we're gonna get. So we'll, we'll come up with a number approximately, we talked about last time, what it's gonna be. But going forward should be easy. We just look at all the money that came in and take a quarter of that and write you a check for it. So that should be easy going forward. Uh, we will continue to do the, um, uh, bridge, um, repairs, 50/50 with the highway department as we go forward. Um, we have agreed to, with the health insurance, on a 5% increase on the fixed cost. We changed, still Anthem, but we changed reinsurers and went with Veris.
Anthem, Veris.
Yeah, Veris, yep. It's still Anthem Company doing our TBA and their platform, but as far as the reinsurance. So that's, uh, that's covered. Um, you guys will be the ones to decide what rate increase, how much you want to be. We have typically funded at less than, than expected claims. We knew this year that, that if we got hit, it would be about $115,000 or so. And we exceeded, uh, um, our claims this year by about 120%. For a while, it looked like about 150% above expected. It ended up about 116% above expected. So we lost money in our reserve due to that, but we expect to lose some. But we lost more than we expected because we, not only did we come in under expect, not come in under expected, we, our claims actually came in over. But there's no way for anybody to control that.
There's actually more to it than that, I think, too. And, and Mary Ann and I know, and Susan are working on this, but the self-insurance fund's broke.
Yeah.
It's actually negative at this point. And so there hasn't been enough withheld into that fund this year and possibly prior years. Um, the, the appropriation lines that we deal with are, are well-funded, and there is plenty of money left in them that hasn't been transferred over.
So they're gonna transfer?
Well, and that's the thing that, I don't know that, Mary Ann and I have spoken about this and I've asked her and Susan to get in there and find out how much is being moved and when it's being moved and so on, so that we can figure out what the solution to this is. We went from $400,000 or $500,000 in that fund to nothing. And, I mean, that's, that's the way the thing works. It's the whole concept. We put money in the appropriations, employees pay deductions and they all go over there. But for some reason, enough hasn't been moved.
Right.
The guess, particular guess on my part, and it's only a guess, I don't know this for sure, is that as these increases have come the last few years, there's been no change to that.
And what they were putting in, yeah.
And we have exceeded at that point. So we've got to figure out how to fix that. And some of that's gonna have to be fixed between now and the end of this month to at least get it back to even.
Now, Nick, Nick can come in, if you want him to come, and talk to you about that and share with you what the rate things were. He's finally coming here.
He's coming next week.
But, but if you don't need him to come, what we're looking at, I can give you the rate analysis papers, just whatever information you want. We have, which doesn't reflect, but we have gotten back about a hundred grand from the pharmaceutical changes. We have now signed up with Ascension as far as a health, a heart plan, like we now have with the, with the bone plan, with the joint plan. So we'll have that, that amount of savings coming in as well. So those things are, those things are working. I just wanted to share that with you.
No, and I, and I wanted to make sure you understood that, that there is a, there is two problems here. Number one is whether or not we have funded enough. And, and I think, based upon what we've been through in the conversations, that when it comes to actual dollars appropriated for the cost of insurance, I believe that we have kept up in that.
I think so.
What I certainly can say, I've noticed over the last few years, is that amount appropriated that's left at the end of the year keeps getting bigger, which means, would stand to believe that we are exceeding your growth rate, which from everything, I don't think we're doing that, which means that we've probably not fixed something in the background, which isn't, this isn't a question for the insurance guy or anything else. Sure, just a simply a process in our courthouse.
Accounting type.
It's the accounting situation that we have to get money back into that self-insurance fund, because basically, I don't think that we have been moving enough in there.
And you'll figure that out.
And we'll have to figure that out.
That's what we do. I just want you to know that if you choose from the rate analysis numbers, we're talking about expected claims. And typically, historically, we have not reached expected claims, except the last two years we have reached expected claims. If you choose a 6% increase, we would be in about the same exposure of about a hundred grand. If we reach expected, we'd be short about a hundred grand. If you go with 5%, I think it's about 130 grand or so shortfall if we reach expected. Typically, we don't, though we have the last couple of years, so no way to guarantee.
So do you want us then to recommend to you what, what percentage increase? Is that what you're really wanting from us then?
If, if you go with 6% increase, that would cover the fixed costs and exposure would be about the same as last year, about $100,000 exposure risk to come up with. 5%, like, as you like, would probably be in the closer to $135,000 to $140,000 exposure expected. With the understanding, if we go above expected again, you'd have more of a, more of a.
So in the past few years, from your expected claims number, which is what you generally have used.
Typically, we've funded under that. We've been midpointed, typically, between the.
Right, right, okay. So from that number, we have exceeded, when it comes to dollars spent, a little over $100,000 a year, is that what I heard?
Yes.
So to the tune, over a period of two years, $200,000 to $250,000. And we evaporated out 400 and some thousand out of the self-insurance fund, which tells me that we haven't been putting enough over there, right? When there's over a million dollars left in the line item in the commissioner's budget, so.
Well, even the commissioner's budget.
No, no, I'm, I'm using it for things, but not very much. Because frankly, that, between now and the 31st of this month, that there's a big chunk of that's gonna have to go to self-insurance fund.
And also, keep in mind now, for two more years after this one, you'll have 1% less to pay from the county funds, because the, still the shift going to the.
So the shift is still going on. And we have to go on past that.
Yeah.
So, so by three more years, we should be at the 80/20 level.
And we may have to, you know, move on from there.
Well, I count as 75.
Absolutely, we may have to keep going till we get to somewhere else.
But we need to tell you here soon, is that something you need to act on, probably your next meeting? Or we need to?
Actually, your meeting, when you decide, it's fine, because the bills will start coming through January, so.
We mean on the 14th.
Yes.
They probably, you have to, that's something you have to vote on, probably in an open meeting?
We, we've actually already approved the, the plan. It's just now for you, how much you want the boys to put into it.
Well, we'll, we'll figure that out by the 14th.
We've essentially already done that.
And we don't, and we don't really need it. You do do anything for us, because we've already approved the plan, and we just need to know how you wanna fund that.
Well, I guess we'll need to decide that. Got it.
Now, do you need Nick to come and present anything to you? Or?
I don't think so.
No need to come then, or?
Not this Nick? Oh, look over there. Not that Nick?
The good-looking Nick.
Oh, oh, okay.
It's not our wheelhouse.
No, that's not our decision. No, we don't want that decision, that's you guys.
I just want you to know.
Appreciate the offer.
We already spent the, committed the money for the new chiller, about $139,000. Tom had asked if we had a second, other cord, and we had. Irish came back, they were about $189,000 for the Saints. We went with the 139. We do have maintenance agreements on both the HVAC as well as the boiler system. We went with Boiler Master. So the maintenance are in the $5,000 to $6,000. I think the HVAC, that includes changing all the filters, changing, checking all the pumps each time. So all the maintenance on that was about $6,000, $800 a year. And I think Boiler Master was about $5,000 for some kind of service.
So remind me when the chiller's gonna be here or when you think we're gonna owe for that?
Spring, we're gonna, we're gonna do in the spring, yeah. As soon as it gets.
It's another 40-week lead time then?
Forty.
Yeah, at least 40 weeks.
Well, that puts you in, in what, August, right?
Yeah, we talked about it.
Okay, so we're not.
That's what I guess.
Well, I'm not talking about spring this year, no. Probably spring next year, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We gotta get this chiller to last another year.
Ooh, okay, I was thinking you were talking.
We gotta live through a whole.
If it's in place.
All of a sudden, now we're talking about putting it in the spring, when it's gonna be here.
Next week, if, if we get.
Forty weeks out, yeah.
Oh, okay.
If we're lucky and forty reaches it, yes, August or fall. If it's a year out, now it's spring.
I get that.
Okay, well.
I was really checking you to, how you getting it in in March or when it's not gonna be.
Not this, not this spring, no.
Okay, I was.
The hope is that we'll have a time where we can shut off the air conditioning, we'll only do the work.
So maybe a 25 budget item instead of 24 budget items.
Well, we'll work it out. I just, now I just know how long to.
Okay. And I'm glad you brought up about the question, Ken. I just talked to their commissioner last week about.
Why don't you ask them about that unified? They call it Unified Development Ordinance.
Yeah, I will get, I will get that. There is a new possibility coming up. We need to consider at some point, I don't even know what, how it will affect us, but the state now allows a residential test. We may wanna consider that if we're gonna have development areas. Thrive is working on, working with us, trying to find a development area, because there are lots of dollars available to encourage builders to come in and build areas now. So that'd be a possibility, something to think about. The only other thing I have is, that I have, and you guys may have other things, so I, again, I don't wanna speak for you. I drove Marshall Road today, this morning, about 5:00, and then I drove 10:00 Road and, gee, what's that other road out there? Going up Strawberry Road. Both of those are need, need paid for, for a long time. I've patched both of them myself, let alone time. In fact, the highway was outpatching Strawberry Road today. The total length is about 15 miles. Nine miles on Strawberry Road going from 47 to, that road comes out of Rockville, Sycamore, whatever that is. And then going from the, from the prison on Strawberry Road, which we are now paving out to the prison, then the prison all the way to 10:00 Road is just two miles and it's about five miles from there to 500 North. So we got about 14, 15 miles. As prices come down on the materials still, we used to get about 15 miles out of our million-dollar community crossings grant. What my wish would be is that we don't do this like we do so many, part of it and then part of it again in a couple of years and part of it again. I'd rather do all the Marshall Road and all the Strawberry Road, if that's the road that we choose, choose to do, and do some other things with our own paving. But that would be, it could be, if we're still in that $100,000 bucks a mile range, we could be a half a million or so shy to get it all done in one year and get them all completed all the way. And then, when we get the new Highway Department Director, we will do a better job of maintaining than we do. Randy has done a great job with what he's had for all these years. I have nothing but good things to say about that. But there are things that we don't do that need to be done on a more regular basis to maintain the good roads as we get them. We don't do crack seal, we don't do fog seal. We do do chip seal over, over roads, but we need to get on a regular plan of chip sealing every five or six years, even on a good road, to preserve that good road, put a new surface. So those are plans coming up. So my question is, my hope is, that if we choose those two roads, the new, or community crossings, if we are a half a million dollars shy, and that's why I was asking Mary Ann where we are with art funds, that we could use maybe art funds to complete those roads and get them done at the, all at the same time, if that would be something.
Fine with that, I'm okay with that.
And if we don't have enough art funds, maybe you guys can help find money to get them all done at one time instead of parsing those out.
I think using the art pens would be a great idea. And if we, you know.
And if it wasn't available, would you be inclined to look and see if there was funds available to be able to do it all one time?
Well, we can look. I'm not sure, I'm not gonna promise you I have a million dollars right here. But yeah, yeah, it makes sense. It makes sense, I mean, if we use these art funds. And one of the things I'd like to ask, and I don't know if you probably will get too long here, but, you know, Joint has, and Roy's talked about this, you know, they, they have, they've not asked for any of the money that we've committed to them.
Right.
Is there an end game as far as that? I mean, the way I understand the art funds, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, we have to have them dedicated by the end of '24 and spent by the end of '26.
Yes.
So my question to the group is, okay, and I don't know what Joint's gonna do, at some point, are we gonna know? Are they gonna know when either Joint's in or out?
They have so long. There is a clock on the NLC grant. And I would have to, that I or Cindy will have to look into and almost make a note of it.
Okay, and if you decide.
Um, but if they, what we don't know, and Per and I talked about this again here recently, is they have never said anything about whether they accepted the grant or not. AT&amp;T rejected theirs, Bloomingdale's doing theirs at three times the cost of what they started with, but they're carrying forward with it. I would not be shocked that Joint says no. That opens up the better part of a million dollars.
Well, and that was my point, is if we aren't gonna, if they aren't going to do that, sorry if I interrupted. But, you know, then there's your, there's money to do whether you wanna black top with it. I mean, that's a great idea then.
Do we need to send them a letter and say?
Well, I mean, do we need to be asking them? Are they, or what they're planning?
We need to have this money committed. We need to know if you're gonna.
I understand, that's why I bring this up.
I don't have a problem.
No, I understand.
I certainly don't have a problem with the commission, with you guys or somebody.
That's what I'm saying, do we need to ask them that question? Not you, I know you don't.
I would, I don't.
I'm not supposed to send a letter saying?
If we ask them. Are you reaching out to them and saying, are you gonna do this project or not? Because if you're not.
Remember, ballpark what their amount was, it was $190,000?
No, it was 900 and, 950 some hell.
Oh, really, for them?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that was the whole deal, okay.
No, no, the whole deal was one over, was a million and some odd thousand, and Bloomingdale only got 130 or so. No, no, the whole deal was one over, was a million and some odd thousand and Bloomingdale only got a hundred and thirty or so.
Okay, then we need to ask.
But I think we need to.
It's, it's almost a million dollars.
Well, we can be sitting on that.
But we have given, Bloomingdale has their money. They have gone, theirs is out, done.
And I would hope we need even more because they are eating a lot of stuff there to get this.
Well, it would be fine, but you know, I, I don't have a quarrel with that either, but they're, they're probably is, is, your, your point is absolutely valid. There probably needs to be a conversation.
Okay.
And it's.
And we'll talk about.
Regardless of this, I'm gonna say what I want to say about this. They have become far more interested in, in running in towns now. They're, they're wiring Brazil. They've done a big project Sullivan. They're all the time doing work in Terre Haute. And there's some other towns and cities in this five county region that they're doing. They don't care about that.
If you remember when they first came, they, they just cared about completing their quadrant. They weren't even gonna cook, hook up residential. They were gonna.
Oh, no, absolutely. That was what it started.
Then they bought into starting to hook up residential that they were going past. So, okay, I just need to know where we were with that. So I really.
Can we, can we have a couple more quick conversations about art? Uh, number one is, and we appropriated this in the twenty-four budget, was the park wifi system. I don't know if you guys have committed.
We have approved that already.
Did you approve the other, the art path of that?
I think we did. Chris Cabe, I don't remember the numbers, but I, I thought.
I don't remember either.
Mary Ann, you remember, I remember Chris Cabe and we talked about that.
Well, I know you talked about it, but whether or not you guys actually approved.
I don't remember the number.
We budgeted, so we don't have anything else have to do with that.
Remember what you budgeted?
Yeah, I can tell you. I'll tell you exactly here what.
And was that half of it or something?
Uh, yes, what we did was half. Uh, we paid for half of it out of parking rack, forty-six thousand, and the other half's out of ARP at forty-six thousand.
Okay.
So if you guys could, could get that one on the list and done.
Let me put that in my phone right now.
Actually, I have forty-five thousand in ARP.
Forty-five in ARP.
All right. Hang on a minute. Let me, let me put this in my phone for our next meeting so I won't feel that. Not that I would forget anything, but.
While you're putting that in there, the second thing is, is that we still have a, a sum of money, and I don't exactly remember the number, maybe you can help with this, of what we committed for the tax software upgrade in the courthouse.
It's two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, but I think only asked for a hundred of that out of ARP when we needed it. Is what I kind of recollect. I'd have to go back and dig in my notes. I have not appropriated, we have not appropriated that money, but I just want it on your radar that there is a hundred thousand of that for that tax system is what I remember the number being, right?
I think that, that sounds familiar.
And that we would find and have, we'll find the money. We're paying for it over five years and we will find the money. But I may take that, well, probably now we'll take it this year, next, or twenty-four, twenty-five.
That's why I would hope that at, after the first of the year, that we would have a, an ARP meeting, just get an actual number and we know what we pay, what we committed. We actually know what we had to deal with. And we'll get a letter to, I don't think we're sending it from Nick yet, because we don't want to sound threatening, but he just sent a letter to, from us to Joint, just asking them if you, you intend to use this money enough.
I think we need to know, like you need to know.
We have to this year. I thought I waited till after first of the year to do that.
Well, you do it whenever you want to.
No, I mean, by the way, you have first year, it's like, this is the year.
Yeah, we gotta go.
We're gonna take it enough because we're not committed elsewhere. We don't want to give it back, so. Okay.
So are you?
So forty-five thousand for wifi. What was, what was the other one?
Forty-five for wifi. Hundred thousand dollars for the courthouse.
Tax software.
Oh, yeah, software, yeah, yeah.
Exoft.
You guys help me now, remember to do.
There is a conversation being had.
It's three of us. I remember one.
And a phone.
There is a conversation in the background happening a little bit about Exoft and they're coming out with their financial side shortly.
Okay.
So maybe sometime this year, about the possibility of looking at that and replacing the Harris system completely at that point.
From what I hear, that's the brilliant way to go.
Well, I think it probably is. Now, it's another big chunk of money that we may have to have some, some deep conversations about what we're gonna do with it, but.
We are all dragging ourselves into the twenty-second or twenty-third century.
Well, I used to program it, it very similarly built to Harris at New Core that was built in the, in the early nineties.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. And I talked to Exoft, the commission promise they were up there and they are thrilled with how it's working in Park County.
Yeah, and Mary Ann can certainly jog to, Kim and Katie are all very happy with it, so.
So at the, at the highway, and I'm not trying to ask you guys what your, your plans are particularly, but just, I'm looking at it from the financial side, of course. Jim had mentioned that you may want to try to hire a new superintendent like midsummer or something and we tried.
Randy's leaving in May.
Oh, he's leaving in May. Oh, I was only.
Immediately, if not sooner, because we need to get somebody.
Oh, okay. Somehow I thought it wasn't till the end of the year.
I talked to Rich. That's what he was thinking.
Oh, okay, okay.
I talked to the lady up at Deltap who's gonna help us.
Do a.
Their plan and get, get.
Okay, okay. All right, well, that really.
Just so you know, like you said that, because I didn't write that down highway. So I asked her what it's gonna cost us, because Randy's, I think, we didn't have a number on him, but I think he thought forty-seven to fifty thousand dollars.
That's about right. It'll be fifty.
Okay. And that's probably gonna cost sixty to sixty-five to get somebody to come look at it, just so you know that, that going forward. Uh, I talked to Randy, but we need to have a road meeting, all of us, we need to, if we're gonna make changes, and there's some changes I want to make. Now's the time to make those changes in the way business is done out there, the standard operating procedures. We need to have some, some adjustments on that. We all need to be a part of that and have our wants and wishes before we get a document to give to the new perspective guys that this is how we're gonna do business. This will be your job description to do these things and run them this way. Tom Martin is willing to sit and talk with me. I've had Tom Martin willing to come be, be work for me, but it didn't happen yet, so we'll work, see how that works. But, but he will have ideas. He highly recommends, as we've talked before still, and I talked to Tim Yocum at the conference as well, about the engineer, because the engineer won't cost us much. Probably costs us twenty-five thousand each county, plus then we get the forty thousand each county from the state. And we have insurance on that. He highly recommends because he thinks every highway engineer should more than earn his keep just in getting grants that we don't now have access to because we don't have a, have an engineer. It's nothing we have to commit to forever. You can try it for a year or two, see if it works. And if it works, great. And if not, then we go back to what we had.
And I've expressed this at times, and I'm okay with that. I have a little bit of heartburn, I guess, in that, and I say this diplomatically, that who our partner is gonna be, that they can get along and that that, that the shared engineer can get along over there.
I think it will be better now because before they were divided into three separate highway districts. Each commissioner was in charge of one district. But now they have done away with that. They are one inch.
That's, that's really my, one of my biggest concerns. The other one, I guess a smaller one is, and I guess the proof is in the pudding, what, as long as we get benefit from it. It's the other, it's the benefan.
As long as we get our twenty hours worth of work.
Yeah. The way he set this up when we had our meeting was that he just worked this many hours for this one and that many hours for the other. He worked days. Uh, two days a week he'd work for one county, two days a week he worked.
Well, I don't care how it's.
Yeah, but that's how he did that. So it worked out okay. Because before, exactly what you're talking about, before, to me, he would have been working with us on those two days. But on the other three days, he would be working with three separate highway departments. And I don't want that kind of split like.
Yeah, I don't think we'll get a person that would want to work in that.
I agree.
That kind of situation. But, okay, so there was that.
Okay. So that's why you'd be worried.
So I'd like to talk about the bank building a little bit, and then obviously this is a joint decision.
And I have to take off, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Uh, the bank building, and I don't, you know, we've not even walked through it. We've kind of had the background conversation. I think that the council is willing to, to, to explore that. It's really up to you guys to explore it. It's not, it's not our goal.
We've had discussion. I think, I think we're in favor if it's a doable and receivable thing, but we weren't sure.
Well, let's look at two, let's look at a couple from our side of this.
Yeah, we can just look at the money.
Yeah, which is the money of two different opportunities that would help that cause. Number one is the ready grant. All right, we talked about that in redevelopment this, this month. We could apply for the ready grant for half of the cost of that thing. When the grand scheme of the district, it doesn't become that much. So you could apply for half the cost of it there. And then, now you've then got some amount of work to do to it otherwise. I don't know what that number is.
What it would take.
Okay, maybe it's a quarter of a million dollars. The town reached out to me after the redevelopment meeting and they were very supportive, actually implored with me to use TIF funds for the rest of it.
Yep, and we could.
And there's nothing that says that we can't.
That's right.
And in the end, you.
Really? The town not favoring that?
Absolutely. They were the ones that brought it up. So with that being said, we've got a couple of years before we would have Rockville paid for. So we may have to do something creative for a couple of years until that TIF money is done paying the town.
When did the jail go off?
The jail's done. It's been done a long time. Courthouse, the first, the tower being done.
It goes off one, the first year goes off.
I can't remember if it's, I think it's, I think it's twenty-five. Is when the courthouse tower, and then you got a couple more years for next.
Continue on, we'll be okay.
But I think we have, if we're going to go for this with ready grant, then we've got to move.
Yeah, those come out.
Yes, that's.
That's something Cindy could do. I mean, or do February first or something.
Yeah, yes.
It wouldn't hurt to apply.
It doesn't hurt to apply for it. And, and I think then we can piece this along after that and make it all work. We can make it out of TIF dollars. There's going to be money left in that TIF fund if, if a quarter of a million dollars was to, to do the interior of that thing.
I think that's the number that Steve Eric's like, because they're looking at it too.
Awful close to having that sitting there.
That'd be great.
But it's something you guys are gonna have to, if you want to do it. Well, I mean, I think we're good with the, the payment of the money. It's better. You know, like everyone might be a little creative, but we can do that. If, if you guys want to explore it, but.
Yes.
So they understand that they wouldn't get their asking price, they'd get the average of the two appraisals then.
Yes.
The seller.
Is that how we, is that how we asked to do it?
Offers the average of two appraisals.
Well, I guess we.
All they can do is turn that down.
Right, they could.
Yeah, well, if they do, I guess they do.
So I, I don't know what that number looks like, average of two appraisals, but I know their asking price last October was something.
So we can't purchase property at, at, at a price above the asking. Okay, there's some stuff, didn't realize.
So how do they need, so do we need to get an appraisal?
Usually what we negotiate is we have one, we pay for one and we have them pay for one is what I've done with people in the past, but I mean, you guys.
The law doesn't say. The law just says appraisal. So how do we go about doing?
Yeah, I mean, that's up for grabs on how that wants to.
I mean, just do it however you want to do it. I mean.
Spending is one of those things that you probably want to move on that.
Yes, we do. That's why I want to know if you guys where you want.
Because of the ready grant.
Protect the taxpayers, okay? Because if they, you know, they put on the market for two million, but appraisers say it's only worth a million.
Right.
You don't want taxpayers to pay two million.
No, no, it perfectly would be there.
It could be. I don't even know what they're asking.
They may appraise for way under what they're asking for.
I have no idea. I mean.
It could be.
For all that they marketed it based on.
I don't know.
I don't.
I don't know.
That was my concern.
Go through the process, we're not gonna.
And there's a, one of the companies that they deal with, that broker deals with, mentioned even what they do sometimes is they'll sell the property and then they donate it back to the county.
Just part of the conversation.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you mentioned that. I hadn't thought of that. Yeah, moving in that direction. We'll, we'll work out the money. We'll work out the money. I mean, the solar, I mean, I'm not supportive of tax abatement for solar. I'm sorry, I won't support that.
Well, that's, that's all you guys. That's not.
That's, I know, I know. I'm just letting you know. I know if you're contract, but I am not supportive.
We just had an ordinance in place.
Oh, I think we do. I think we need the ordinance. Oh, yeah.
We don't want a bunch of these companies to come in.
Oh, we don't. No, I don't want them next to me. I don't want them next to me. Do you want them next to your place outside?
I'd have a barrier around it, right near it.
Yeah, but not all of us have that.
I understand. Well, you could have a barrier around it. Get trees around it, so I'm okay with.
No, I'm not.
Those things, it's a fad. The whole renewable thing is a fad.
I think when those are, I think solar is a bad, I really think, I think we're gonna see it maybe different ways. I think when they start building some cities, I think exactly what you were talking about. It's gonna have to be equipped for solar on the roof. They are, there are studies now showing, Germany has them right now, in the road, in the roads, in the interstate roads. They have solar implanted in the highways.
Well, I see. That makes sense. That makes sense.
Their glass panels, they drive them, which are stronger than asphalt. They don't need to repair them.
I'm telling you, we're the day you take up a bunch of farmland with solar panels now. You put it in marginal and your roofs and stuff.
We'll put it in the desert.
You put them in the desert where you can't, but you take up this prime productive farmland in the Midwest.
And I don't understand why they don't do the desert. The tran, well, the transmission, that's what the.
Power, you can't get power.
I don't want to see a bunch of windmills.
Well, I don't either. I hate that one. I know.
Solar is a little better.
It's a little better.
Solar, you don't have to see. You can plant trees around it and it's just gone. I don't want to see one in the county. That's what one right by those covers.
Well, you want to do with your land.
I know. I'm a, and I'm a, and I'm a, and I'm a property rights guy, you know? You ought to reasonably do whatever you want to on your property.
And I would agree with that. If it's my land and I want to.
Yeah, and I support that. I support that.
You need to have some kind of god.
Ooh, we do.
You may be buying me dinner and trying to talk me out of it, but, but still, I know you understand still my decision in the end.
Yeah, you know, I, I respect that. The, that's one of the foundations of our.